Everybody and welcome to the May 27th, 2025 regular meeting of council. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Norma, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Tom Bagnall.
Present.
Councilmember Audrey Saavedra.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Hudson. Mayor John Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Ian Gillespie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tatiana Murrieta.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Schulp.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Norma. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the monthly report by the Coolidge Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our reinvestments per March for A.C. now coming, country made complete, being in print, extra hands, ADP, what you probably think that's about, war spend, Front and Side Express of Coolidge, Worry Club of Coolidge, saws and pavers, and all this. A new member, ADP, P. K. The Consultant, who's in the system, J.C. Prince, and Chris Lopez, State Representative. Our staff for March were local visitors.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Local visitors was 323, 12 in-state, 19 out-of-state, 2 foreign. Our referrals were 2,940. Year-to-date visitors was 1,077. Casa Grande Ruins, they had for March, they have 15,796 visitors. Year-to-date is 44,043. Jim and Mineral Museum, 247 visitors, and they're up to 700. The DAV Museum had 131 in March, and year-to-date is 212. Some upcoming events is Penal Partnership Monthly Breakfast on June 6, Father's Day, June 15, our membership luncheon on June 18, and our SBDC Workshop AI for Business Owners coming up on June 24. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, presentation of the 100-year annual celebration.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe six weeks ago or so, we stood up here and talked a little bit about the 100-year celebration we have coming up. Again, it's on September 20. Notice these are some of the logos we'll be using, as well as one that I got from our city manager that Phil did. So anything we send out will have one of these logos with it. First off, the location, we had talked about two separate locations, one being maybe downtown and the other being in the park. I believe the committee has decided that at least what we feel is best is doing it in the park. We're getting ready to install the big shade structure over the cement slab where the stage would be set up. And it's just set up with electricity and everything we already need to run an event like this. And real quickly, just so you guys are aware and people in the audience, we have city staff from the clerk's office, from the Parks and Recreation Department, member of the Parks and Recreation Board. We have representation from three different community members, the chairperson from our youth council is on the committee, as well as some help we've gotten from Danny at the library on some of the social media stuff that is going to be going out soon. So you're looking at roughly 10, 11, and the city manager's been in on, I believe, all but one of the meetings. So we're brainstorming. The reason we're here is to kind of update you on where we're at, and then also get you guys thinking about it. And if you have anything that you want incorporated in this celebration, as it goes on, just give us a call, an email or something, something you may think is nice that you would want to put in this celebration. So unless, you know, you guys tell me different, we're going to move forward with having the event in the park. We will. There are some downtown businesses that want to do something that evening in conjunction with the, with the event. So we had talked about running a shuttle with our recreation vans, running people to the various spots, sort of just a constant with the two vans circling around, dropping people off, picking them up, taking them back to the park, that kind of thing. With the couple of businesses that have already approached us, and we may approach others and let them know we're doing something, and if they want to have something going on, we would be happy to add them to our stop where people can hop out and check out what they have going on. All right, the information, September 20. Still be kind of warm, so we're going to start at 4 o'clock and go to 10 or 11. We put 11 up here. Food vendors, information booths, we'll have games, DJ band. We want to do a drone show rather than fireworks. There will be a time capsule element to this, and a picture wall. So we're going to be sending out a call for old photos. People can email us or bring them. We'll make copies of. Initially, we thought about setting up a giant wall, and then I haven't even gotten as far with the committee yet. But then I saw what the high school had going on at graduation, and we may be better off with adding those to a video and just having a video board playing, you know, circulating those photos over and over and over so people can see them. So, you know, we want as many as we can get, old, new, and anywhere in between of Coolidge. I think it would be cool to sit there and watch a video of just, you know, photos of our city over the years. All right, so we're also going to be going out for sponsorships. We're going to be asking businesses like we do, much like we do for Coolidge Days. What we discussed is sort of a combined, since Coolidge Days is only a few weeks later, we'll ask them if they want to sponsor, and then they will be a sponsor for both events. They'll get on the T-shirts or the posters, any flyers, any social media stuff we send out. Budget, so, you know, we're shirts, band, DJ, promotional material, drone show. We've overestimated probably, but around $25,000. We believe we can recruit quite a bit of that in sponsorships. So however, we do also have a special event budget that we can draw from, but we will go after money and hopefully some big-time sponsors that can help cover hopefully most of what the event would cost us. And that's really it. So we're still in the beginning stages. We're still taking ideas, nothing set in stone. But we do want to, we do want to move forward with solidifying schedules, getting our sponsors, and start really putting this together. I mean, we're not until September, but that's going to, that's going to come rather quickly for us. That's all I got for you, Mayor.
So, September, what, 20?
Yes, sir.
Then that's just a one day.
It's just a one-day thing, yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, we'll have a carnival a few weeks later for Coolidge Days, a carnival aspect or anything like. It's, we're going to try to more celebrate, you know, the city itself and our heritage, and we're still rounding up different organizations to come and perform and things like that, but.
And if anybody has any ideas, whether it be from up here or anywhere else, they can get a hold of you and talk to you about it.
And get a hold of me or get a hold of Norma in the clerk's office. And, you know, we're happy to do just about anything. I mean, what we can do in the seven hours, I guess, that will be out there.
Okay. Anybody got any comments or questions or...? Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay, now we'll move into a public hearing to receive public comments on a conditional use permit, application submitted by Mr. Reg Destry and Destry Development LLC in conjunction with Pinnacle Consulting, Inc., and Sun State Tower on behalf of Verizon Wireless to allow for a 65-foot wireless communication facilities use stealth water tower located in a 22.28 acre site approximately 1,350 feet north of Highway 87 as the midsection half-mile mark between Skousen Road and Kennelworthy Road, APN 209080060, 1766 West Highway 87. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me call out a couple of things here, a little bit of housekeeping. The location is shown here on the subject property is about a quarter mile north of Highway 87. There is no other similar facility of this type within a mile in any direction. That's one of the portions of an inventory that is necessary in order to justify a new location, not just a stealth facility or any kind of facility. So this, as it is proposed this evening, does stand on its own merit. As can be seen here in the subject property, it is in the R5 Manufactured Home Residential District. That just happens to be the designated zoning. There's no other entitlements calling out houses or pads or anything out there even related to the type of thing. So it is allowed to be proposed there. As the mayor called out, it is a 65-foot Verizon Wireless facility. Be very brief this evening. You can see the compound here, which is 40 by 40 feet. The stealth water tower is represented by the circle here, ground equipment for the initial telecommunications equipment that would be in it, other areas or other equipment to be within it, the access gate here. And this is a three-point hammerhead turnaround for any service or emergency vehicle equipment that could approach the site, stage it, and then exit from it. And this will be concrete, which is a nice feature. A few other things to call out here. You can see a little bit better detail here. This is the MU block wall that would surround the compound, just so you can see through it here, just to see what the equipment would look like. Supporting material, the actual stealth apparatus itself, you can see it at the top there, some panel antennas, and it would have the capacity to have another two potential carriers for a total of three. So by creating this, we'll actually have a place to guide other carriers that might actually come along rather than, once again, having to do the one-mile inventory. Just a little bit of quick wrap-up. You can see what the site looks like here from a little bit of a distance here, the wall, what the facility might look like, just a little bit of a blow-up of that particular thing. The applicant representative is here this evening, and at the later part of the meeting, we'd be able to answer any questions that you have, so.
Well, I do have, this is on the north side of the road, so how far is it from the reservation?
From the roadway? Oh, from the residence?
The tower itself, when it's installed, how far will it be from?
From the onsite residence?
Reservation.
Oh, the reservation. Oh, I think it's at least like about a three-quarters or a mile. The reason that this has come about like this is there's other federal and state stuff that you have to go through from sort of an archaeological or environmental inventory, and because of its proximity to the monument, this is how this proposal has kind of come about, talking to their tribal historic officer and some other sources.
So they know about it?
Yes, they're fully aware of it.
So who's going to clean up the, that surround block wall when it gets tagged? Because it's going to get tagged all the time.
That would be the responsibility of the applicant.
And when you say, so we can have others, so how close would another one have to be? Did you say a mile?
That's the inventory.
Well, how much inventory is out there? I mean, what I'm saying is you're going to...
Right now, there's nothing within a mile.
I know, but I mean, I'm talking in the future, Phil. Is there room for 15 of them out there?
Within the existing facility or...?
No, 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 within the surrounding area. I don't want to have a tower land, forest out there.
Well, that's what this is designed for. This is a co-location facility, so you could have up to three carriers here. Inside the one. On the top there is one site for Verizon. The next middle level would be another carrier, then another one just below that.
Okay, so what if that works out fine and somebody else wants to put another one? That's what I'm...
Well, then we'll have to work with that situation. They'll have to do an inventory. In this case, there'd be the availability of this. Now, if this becomes fully built out, then we'd have to be working with those circumstances. But the nice thing is we have this type of facility to work with here as basically this jurisdiction's first stealth facility.
Okay, well, anybody else have any questions?
The zoning code gives us very specific controls and requirements that would allow us to guide or limit the number of facilities that would be out there.
Thank you, Phil. Anything from anybody else? All right, we'll move into, out of that and into call of the public. Yeah. Oh, okay. Does anybody else have anything to say about this, this item? Oh, there's a guy leaving. No? Okay. Am I okay now?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, now moving to call the public. If anybody has any, address the council, and please step up to the podium, and you have up to three minutes to say your piece. All right, not seeing anybody come forward. We'll move out of that, and we will... Items for consent. Is there anybody up here that wants any of these items pulled off for individual consideration?
Yes, Mayor Thompson, I'd like to have 6, 7, and 14 poll, please.
6, 7, and 14?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, then we will save 6, 7, and 14, and I'll start with item eight. Consider approval of entering into Public Works 1 agreement and addendum between the City of Coolidge and Public Works 1 for the asset and data tracking services, for data tracking services of the city roads and pavement conditions. Item nine, consider approval of entering into a service agreement between Iwar Q. Systems, Inc. and the City of Coolidge Public Works Division for the Work Order System permitting an inspection management software, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Item 10, consider approval of entering into cooperative agreement for housing rehabilitation services with property couple LLC utilizing City of Eloy's Housing Rehabilitation Services contract dated October 28, 2024, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item 11, resolution number 25-04, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona approving submission of an application for Proposition 202 grant funds from the Tahoe Odom Indian Community in the amount of $25,000, and approving the acceptance and the use of funds for the cost of the consultation fees for the development and maintenance of the city's disadvantaged business enterprise program. Item 12, resolution number 25-05, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona approving submission of an application for Proposition 202 grant funds from the Tahoe Odom Indian Community in the amount of $1,054, or $1,054, $125, and approving the acceptance and use of funds to purchase a fire pump testing and training unit for the fire department. Resolution number 25-06, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona approving submission of an application for Proposition 202 grant funds from the Tahoe Odom Indian Community in the amount of $104,695, and approving the acceptance and use of the funds to purchase a new sewer pump for the Public Works Liquid Waste Department. And item 15, consider approval of the claims for the month of April 2025. And Norma, the one vote will take care of all of the resolutions, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, unless there's anything further, I'm going to need a... Oh, no, I'm not. You're going to do it. Oh, I need a motion to get it on there, and a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Norma.
All right. Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Schulp?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murrieta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six, consider approval of entering into an agreement for the purchase of equipment to purchase three portable light towers from HERC Reynolds in the amount not to exceed $19,191.50 for the Parks and Rec Department, utilizing capital improvement funds and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary document.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Councilmember Bagnall, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. First, you've, we've seen these, they're operational, they work fine?
Oh, yes, sir, yeah. I've been onsite, yeah.
Okay, and roughly how many hours do they have on them, or is that, or is that measured or anything?
They do measure it. You'll see one was a little cheaper than the others. It had a little over 200 hours, and the other ones were around 94 hours is what I was told by the company.
Well, that's really not bad at all.
No, not at all.
I think so, okay. And then is there any type of a warranty involved with them?
So with these, because they are used, all we'll get out of them is like a two-month, a 60-day warranty. If something goes wrong in the first two months, they'll fix it completely. After that, we'd be on our own.
Okay, so we need to fire them up right away and run them and see what happens?
Make sure they're running, yeah. Well, we'll have them fired up in September for sure, but at the event, but yeah.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve item six of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, item seven.
Thank you.
Consider approval of entering into an agreement for purchase of equipment to purchase a 2018 Freightliner MD 2106H7 2,000-gallon water truck from United Rentals for the Streets Department, and unfreeze capital sales tax funds for an amount not to exceed $61,248.80, waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the city, and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Mr. Bagnall, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I just needed, I just was hoping I could get some clarification because it states in here that, you know, that the 24, 25 fiscal budget allotted funds to purchase the spray injection patcher. And I didn't find it in the capital improvement as one of the items there. But then it says that we got the grant from the Hila River or Tohono Odom, which one was it? Tohono Odom, and we used that to purchase it. But I'm, just was a little bit confused because it says that it was in the budget as a capital item for this year, but I don't show it. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, but I'm in the capital improvement part of the budget.
As far as the grants are concerned and what money was allocated, that would be a question for Mr. Navarro. I'm here to present any questions about the 2,000-gallon water truck. I don't know where the allocated money came from. I just know the bid process and the truck that we found.
Okay, yeah, it's because it, I'm just looking at it, and I mean, if it, if we're supposed to be using the money that was allotted for the patcher that was paid for with the grant, but we never had it budgeted, I wasn't sure why we needed it all of a sudden, so.
Mr. Lopez, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor, if I can. I've got some information from Ben that he left us in case there were some questions. And because of the savings from the other, first of all, the water truck, it can go into areas that the bigger truck can't, like in Heartland or repairing sidewalks. The big one won't fit, so it's nice to have a smaller truck to be able to do that.
I think it's more about where'd the money come from.
Right, yeah. And so the, he said, with the additional savings, and because they saved from the grant funds, then he was able to use those savings to purchase this through the capital improvement budget. So according to Bennett, it's in the budget. So we'll need to find it and see if maybe it's, that's what he told me here, so.
Okay, the patcher isn't in the budget for the capital improvement budget, from what I can see.
So this truck, yeah, no, I think, I think this is because it was something they needed, so they're asking to unfreeze capital sales tax to be able to... Yeah, so that's why he's trying to get this, since he got a grant for the other thing. You could still have it in, in the, in the budget and bring it to you for purchase.
Okay, but the patcher wasn't in the budget, and we're using the savings from, that we got because we got the patcher with the grant money.
Right.
But we still don't have the money in the budget for, that we can use to buy, to get the water truck. Is that correct, or...?
No, I would think because of the savings, that money's still there, so that's to purchase this water truck. Well, yeah, apparently, we can, we can look that up if you want to, you know, table this, and we'll get you the information.
Well, I've got the budget in front of me here, and unless, unless it's somewhere else and not in the capital improvement budget.
Yeah, because if, if the grant came in, yeah, I didn't, I didn't go into that portion of it with him. I just talked to him about the, where he got the savings. But we can look that up and go into the budget itself and then find it. If you'd like to table it, and we'll bring it back.
Okay, yeah, because it's just that, you know, the, it's a, we have a false narrative here, you know, telling us that we saved money from the, on the patcher that was budgeted when it wasn't budgeted. So that's what I'm just trying to get at.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, if, if we were, if we had it in, so to purchase the other and found a grant for the other, for the other person, it would have had to been in the budget, it should be in there.
I have no problem with the water truck.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll have to find where the, the other item was that, that he saved with to be able to get the money for this.
Gilbert, why don't we just table this for now? And I think, I think, Tom, I think part of what it was is it just, it just came available. I mean, it wasn't like...
Right.
They were too expensive, and this one just popped up, I believe. That's what happened. It came out of nowhere, so.
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, the environment and the dust control that we are under, we were presented with this water truck. A new one's roughly $150,000. This particular one is a little over 60, as you can see. I actually went down to Maricopa and put eyes on it and got to run it on a little construction site. It's a really good truck. It's a solid truck. We actually purchased a truck for solids a few months back, and it's been a really outstanding purchase for the City of Coolidge. I'd hate to see it go, but again, if you have questions that need to be answered, I understand that as well.
Yeah. Well, and again, I don't have a problem with us going ahead and moving forward and getting the water truck. It's just, you know, I was just a little bit confused by what was put in here, because one place it's saying that we budgeted for the patcher, but then we didn't budget for the patcher, and we was in the savings, so I don't, you know, it just wasn't all jiving together.
Well, Mayor and Councilmember Bagnall, it could be under Streets or a different area, but it would have a different name, so it may be in there. We'll just have to look at it. So, the thing, we table it. Hopefully, we won't lose access to the truck.
There is a possibility of that.
Yeah, so we may not...
And again, I, if we need the water truck, I don't want to hold up getting the water truck, but I just wanted to get a clarification on this, so you can get that clarification and get it to council as to where this was in the budget. Because I looked through the budget, I couldn't find it anywhere.
Yeah, I talked to our finance director. He believes it may be in another spot in Streets instead of here, so we can, we'll look that up and see if there...
I looked there, too, and I couldn't find it, so.
So we'll, we'll find it for you.
So if, if it's okay, if, unless the other council members have a problem with it, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, what's it, item seven of the consent agenda, and then you'll...
Yes, I will.
Motion for council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, that carries. Item 14, resolution number 25-07, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Coolidge, Arizona approving submission of an application for Prop... approving submission of an application for Prop. 202 grant funds from the Tohono Indian Community in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and approving the acceptance and use of funds toward the cost of fitness court for the new park.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, again, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, I know that we had gone ahead and, uh... We had approved to go ahead and get the grant or whatever from the company that was putting out this court. And then it was my understanding that at the time that, uh... Whenever it came to it, that we would then be voting at that time, we'd be asked to go ahead and approve it, to accept it and then get the court.
Right.
So... But now we're applying for the grant. Basically, we're saying we're already gonna accept it.
So... I can see how it seems that way. Um, but no, until we come back in the second meeting in September, um, you guys will then approve the fitness court. We're applying for this grant in case you approve it. So if you don't approve it in September, then we can just... And we happen to get this grant, we could turn it down or we can ask them if we could use it for a different portion of the park or give it back. But we will absolutely be back the second meeting in September to get your guys' approval to move forward with the fitness court.
Okay. And if we do turn that down and then instead want to use it for that out, what are our chances of being able to keep the grant?
I mean, that would... We'd have to talk with the tribe and ask them if we can move it to a different portion of the park and explain to them reasoning or why it would be beneficial.
Yeah. Because I... Because what I'm thinking is, you know, we've got a lot of work that needs to be done at San Carlos Park. And, you know, we need some decent restrooms down there.
I agree.
And, uh... And one thing that I... What I ran into over the weekend was we were down putting the flags up, the large flag on the flagpole. And that needs some work on it too. And the flags down there are tattered and everything, so really like to try to, you know... If... Especially when we're coming up on September twentieth with our hundredth anniversary, to, you know, try to get the park up straight and looking nice and presentable.
So I mean, I know Mr. Navarro is not here. Was asking for money for the restrooms at San Carlos for them to fix them. Um, we have a... Some work that also needs to be done on that building in particular, just aesthetically. Um, and there's other grants that are gonna come available and we'd be happy to apply for money specific to San Carlos Park.
Yeah. And, yeah, because I mean, you know, we just approved, what, seventy-five thousand dollars for a shade structure, but we still don't have, you know, nice restrooms over there that can be used. So, you know, I mean, it's... We can put that up, but you still don't have a place to go to the bathroom, you know?
Right.
So.
That's why when we do our events, you see that we rent the porta-johns, which isn't ideal, but, um... I think you're not gonna get an argument from me on whether we need new restrooms at San Carlos or not 'cause we're in agreement on that.
Okay. All right. Well, that's really... So this does not obligate us towards actually having to go and get those 'cause I'm still not even sure, you know, how they're gonna fit in out there at the regional park and when that'll be done, so.
Yeah, so I think... I think, um, as it pertains to the regional park, uh, probably the best thing to do for... Would be for me to... We're in a holding pattern now 'cause we're getting a CADAEX done, trying to apply for the one point five million dollar federal grant through Arizona State Parks. So that was something we have to do. Um... Probably best if I just came back and did a little presentation on the park and sort of showed you guys where, if you approve the fitness court, where it may fit in and, uh, give you a little breakdown on what money we have and what I... What we believe it's gonna cost to get phase one finished.
Okay, and then also give us a timeline on when that will... If we do approve the, uh, fitness court, give us a timeline on when that's going to be done because again, I don't see us acquiring something and then putting it in a warehouse someplace.
Right, yeah, so it would definitely be something we wouldn't... And we wouldn't want to keep too long stored. We... If we're gonna buy it, then we want to get it put in.
Right.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Well, San Carlos Park restrooms are an interesting topic for sure. Back in the day, we tried to keep them open and, uh, couldn't do it. But, you know, maybe we'll find a new way of security. So, anyway, that's not... That's not the item that's agenda-sized, so... What are we on here, fourteen? Need a motion to act on item fourteen.
I move to approve item fourteen of the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Right, that carries.
I have to do a roll call on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Well, maybe a...
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murrieta?
Yes.
Councilmember Shope?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We already did fifteen, so now we'll move out of that and move into business items for regu... Regular items. Presentation by the Coolidge Chamber of Commerce on their fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget proposal in the amount of ninety-eight thousand dollars from the city of Coolidge.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'd like to introduce our board members, Debbie Neely with Kiva and Tom Scott with M&amp;S Equipment. Debbie... Debbie's gonna do the presentation.
Thank you, Lynn, our illustrious director of the Coolidge Commerce. Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. As Lynn mentioned, my name is Debbie Neely and I serve on the board with the Coolidge Chamber and have for many years and I'm glad to still do so today. Um, I'm here tonight to request the city's continued support and funding of the work that the Chamber does in promoting economic development, local business support and tourism in Coolidge. Basically, this evening is to provide you information and address any questions that you may have, uh, that will support the Chamber's funding request. And so for us going forward, the best thing that I can do for you is share with you where we were, so I can tell you what we have done and how we plan to move forward in the future to facilitate the development of, uh, the Chamber together with the city. The Chamber's partnership with the city focuses on two... Basically, it's just two primary, um, areas. We are committed to promoting Coolidge and promoting and expanding the economic development of Coolidge. Our mission at the Chamber aligns with the city's, uh, mission as well. We strive for growth. We foster a strong economic development and we promote Coolidge as a thriving place to live. Not just a place to live, but a place to live, work, stay, build your business and help Coolidge grow. That's one of our main goals. Um, Lynn is working my slideshow here, so if I get ahead of you... Are you doing that? Okay. If I get ahead of her, behind her, just bear with me. You know, the Chamber, and I'm... I know I'm repeating a lot of what you already know, but the Chamber has one driver for, um, expansion and development in Coolidge every year and that is its Cotton Days. In twenty-twenty-five, our attendance at Cotton Days this year was close to seven thousand people. And with that, we always pray for good weather. We had one day that was a little windy and kind of, I think, pushed people away, but we still had a very good attendance at that event. Um, and in the last couple of years, uh, we've tried to expand and bring new ideas to Cotton Days. We focused a couple of years ago on a tractor show, which is growing in popularity and also showcasing the Gem and Mineral Museum, which is now expanding. Uh, it's a sector for, I think, Pinell County and the rest of Arizona that maybe they don't even know this is what we have. So it may not just be attraction for people in Pinell County, but it brings people from across the whole state of Arizona and perhaps outside of Arizona that are real enthusiasts for the Gem and Mineral Arena. The Chamber, as you know as well, hosts the visitor centers for the city of Coolidge. And that, uh, visitor center is staffed, just like the Chamber office is. Um, we are the first point of contact for any visitors that come to the city of Coolidge. And so our office is, um, situated in a very strategically easy place to find. And it also is staffed with people who are very friendly and send a welcoming greeting to those that come into the city of Coolidge, possibly for the very first time. So we are the first face that... At our, um, tourism center that people see that come to Coolidge. And so we're very proud of that and we want to project the best foot forward whenever someone steps through that door. When people come through that door, they can find that they can pick up for their business relocation packages. They can also get new resident welcome kits. Um, and we do also monthly campaigns within the Chamber that showcases, uh, local attractions and improvements such as Cotton Days. Um, and we do also additional presence, which we really have upgraded on in the last couple of years. We've all had to kind of step up our game and get on board with it. But we are very, very, very vocal and seen on additional presence with social media and video reels that constantly stream about the number of businesses that are in Coolidge and a lot of our big promoters within Coolidge that are businesses as well. Um, we... We don't do that alone. Um, we work really hard, but we also work with a lot of great companies that partner with us. Uh, one is the Arizona Office of Tourism, Explorer Arizona. We do our quarterly regional meetings with other Pinell County Chambers and visitor centers. We strive to be participants in the Southern Arizona Regional Tourism Group and we are a member of the Explorer Pinell County Tourism Advisory Group. That's a big old name, but I'll have to give you a little bit of information that Lynn, as director with the Chamber, together with her staff, are involved in that every month and they're promoting themselves and promoting Coolidge. One of the things that I have noticed from being on a board member for member years was our business directory. I can't tell you what an undertaking that is to try and put that together every year with a local printer that is a, uh, a Coolidge member and trying to get that out in a precise, professional manner to the businesses and the local residents of Coolidge and everybody else who walks into that visitor centers and wants to pick that up and see what's happening in Coolidge. I am here to report to you finally. We have really gotten that down to a well-oiled machine. We know how to put together a directory and we know how to partner with the companies that will help us, um, get that in a very professional, uh, finished product for Coolidge. Um, that directory lists the businesses alphabetically and then also according to their specialty so that when a visitor or someone just off the street comes in and picks up that directory, they know immediately what's in Coolidge, what's available to them in terms of restaurants, um, other businesses that may support them, whether it's a print shop, a salon or whatever. They know immediately where to go, so they don't have to search and find all the time. It's right there at their fingertips. Um, I'm glad to share with you that in twenty-twenty-four, the Chamber was just about two percent shy of an increase of its attendance in the visitor centers. Um, that to me and as well to the Chamber demonstrates that, um, we... We still need that visitor center and we still need to have it staffed during business hours for people that come in. And it also validates that there are people coming here into Coolidge that are just dropping by. That's the first place they stop to see what's going on here and that we can provide that service to people and businesses that may be looking to relocate themselves to Coolidge. The Chamber also actively collaborates with many and... Um, to preserve and promote Coolidge heritage. We partnership with the following groups to enrich the visitor's experience and boost cultural tourism. We've got the Pinell Geology Museum, um, DAV Military Museum, the Coolidge Historical Museum, Castle Grand Ruins National Monument. And I was to share with you that the Chamber holds a seat with the Friends of the Ruins Board. And one of the things that we're currently working on, um, I know I mentioned earlier that I'm talking about what we've done, but I want to share with you also, we have perspective for things that we're gonna do in the future. And we're working on reviving the National American Musical Festival. I don't know if any of you remember that, but it used to be a... It used to be a really awesome event at the ruins and we're looking to try and bring that back. Um, I think it's something that not just Pinell County or the people of Coolidge, but people... It will bring people to Coolidge from across Arizona to come and visit that and perhaps other states as well. I'm probably dating myself again about the days past with the Chamber. I remember when we used to sit down at Chamber meetings and we'd look at members... Oh, okay, there's a hundred and two members and we lost three, so now we're down... And every month it seemed like we were just constantly staying at that hundred mark of people in and out, in and out. I am happy to report to you that the Coolidge Chamber currently has two-hundred-and-seventy members and we're looking to keep growing. But most importantly, and I'll share this with you as a business owner, I think this is just phenomenal for the Chamber and the work that Lynn and her staff does within those offices walls. There's an eighty-nine percent retention rate. That... That's huge. If you can keep having people keep coming back to the Chamber because, um, they've validated with them themselves or their businesses, that they're getting something from it or perhaps they just like to support the activities of the Chamber and what we're about and what we're doing. I think an eighty-nine, almost ninety percent retention rate is just huge. And so, um, we're looking to always improve that, but I think that's a real, um... A real mark in our favor in terms of the Chamber and the work that the Chamber does. On a monthly basis, the Chamber also engages in ribbon cuttings for new businesses and brand openings for new businesses. And I'm sure you're all aware of our annual banquet, which is just a huge undertaking, um, and acknowledgement of businesses that have been either new or in the middle or long-term in Coolidge and acknowledging them for the job opportunities, their support of Coolidge, the support of the schools, families, whatever it may be that they do here within our community. Our annual banquet is, um, a huge way that we honor the members of our Chamber and the impact that they give on our community. We also have, as a Chamber, a support for education. Um, we have a close affiliation with... With all of the Coolidge schools. And I'm happy to also report to you that we participate in the AARP reading program. And the reading levels over the past year have increased sixteen percent. And that's a result of this program that's been documented and the improvement that it has done within the Coolidge community. So that's a huge impact. We also, uh, work with the Market on the Move, which is also known as Quote Mom. Um, it runs November through May. And I think one of the coolest thing about this is not just what it does for the community, but how it pulls people from the community to get involved. We get like anywhere from, what do you say, Lynn, ten, fifteen, twenty? Um, community members that will come in and help distribute those, um, packets or those, um, those food programs or the foods that are, um, allocated to go out. It... It helps the community come... Become involved so they can see what's going on in the community. And they are... They want to be a part of it. And I think that's really instrumental in getting your community involved as well. And the Chamber encourages that, they promote it and they invite them back every time 'cause we still need those twenty people with those hands to help hand out those boxes. because we still need those 20 people with those hands to help hand out those boxes. The Coolidge Chamber is also, as you know, involved with the economic development of Coolidge. It is facilitated by the Chamber and chaired by Gilbert Lopez, our city manager. We have our quarterly meetings where we share the city's regional updates. We provide networking opportunities for businesses and individuals within the area. And we also work to engage in business retention and this and and growth within the city of Coolidge. The Chamber assisted the CEDC program in purchasing a new business intelligence program. And when I first read that, I thought, okay, we've got IT coming in here, what's going on? But it sounds like that we are really moving forward in the good direction to help support the city and the Chamber and the data-driving infrastructure that we really need to have to move forward. The Chamber is also a big advocate for spreading the word on the economic growth for the city. We host the Breakfast with the Mayor quarterly, encouraging the community and other businesses to attend. And that those sessions help build direct communications between the city, the Chamber, and other businesses and individuals so they know what's happening within their community. And then they can decide whether they want to be a part of it or they want to interact with it and help move it forward and make it become even a better program. We do our annual State of the City address, which is always a big, a big showstopper. People attend that a lot. We like to congratulate you, Mayor Thompson, for bringing us all up to speed all the time. It's a very, very informative event, and we're pleased to host that. We also work with regional business expos. And this year, I think, Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is the first time partnered with Florence Eloy and the city of Coolidge. In the past, we've tried to do business expos for Coolidge, and Florence found that they were doing them too, and Eloy did their own thing, and it was hard to maybe get participation or interest. So we thought, you know what, let's just partner together, and with a better with a better platform and a broader platform, we can get a broader audience, and that's exactly what turned out. So again, there's strength in numbers. We don't do this all by ourselves, but we partner with the right type of people to help us achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve and help them achieve theirs as well. So in the end here, why does funding matter? And that's kind of, I hope, what you gleaned from what I shared with you before. But the funding we receive from the city and we share, is even a nonprofit at the Chamber, the same challenges that every business and individual. There's always increase in wages, increases of cost of goods, and we're trying to meet those and and keep the good staff that we have in place and provide more and more efficient and attractive benefits to the city of Coolidge. But the funding we received is used directly to benefit the Chamber for our local businesses, attracting our visitors here, attracting people who come in here maybe for the first time. And like, I didn't even know Coolidge existed, I didn't know what they did, I don't know who they are, kind of spark their interest and and kind of bring them back for the second, third time around, and maybe hopefully help them relocate here with not just themselves individually, but their businesses. We support employers, which are many of our our business membership, and we look to build a stronger and more connected community within the city. Our, with the city's support, we're asking that you help us at the Chamber continue what our mission is. And our mission is to provide leadership for the continued growth of our community. We advocate an environment in which our local businesses succeed. We want them to succeed, grow, and expand, and we want our community to prosper. We support and strengthen the environment by driving economic development and constantly being involved in economic development with new ideas that comes from the CEDC and other business owners and other members in the community. We look to always foster community partnerships and promote our members. I want to thank the city for the support that you've given us in the past. And I just look at this as it's a it's a way to just keep blossoming. We just want to keep growing, we want to do more, do better, do it all the time, every day. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I don't have any questions, I just want to tell you that I personally think you guys do a great job. I have occasion to talk to people who deal with other chambers and and are members of other chambers and other communities, and they speak fairly highly of our Chamber.
And I hear that as well, Mayor. Thank you for sharing that because I'm involved with other chambers with Pinal County, and they kind of sometimes look at you, what are you guys doing that's so special? It's like, wow, I tell you, I have to shoot you, so Coolidge is just great.
And I would, for the record, I'd say the State of the City is a joint effort. It's not just me, it's apartment heads and everybody kind of will get together. And Tony Roth really puts a lot of it, we get together and pow-wow and get a lot of it done. So I'm just the guy that gets pushed up there to to present it, so.
Well noted, thank you.
I I think people should get credit when they do the work.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything they want to? Okay. In that case, I guess we're going to need a motion to act on item number 16.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve. Second?
Motion is second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You know, you're good to go for another year. You're right. Item 17, Resolution Number 25 dash 08. A resolution of the Mayor and the City Council for the city of Coolidge, Pinal County, Arizona, granting a conditional use permit for a wireless communications facility, WCF, in the R5 manufactured home residential zoning district under Article whatever that comes out to, what is that, 24, 26, of the Coolidge City's Coolidge zoning code located on a 22.28 acre site, approximately 1,350 feet north of Highway 87, as that probably should be at the midsection half-mile mark between Skousen Road and Kenworthy Road, APN 2090800601766 West Highway 87.
Well, you saw the presentation earlier, and that's the information at hand. So the action is to adopt the resolution, if you will.
Okay. Does anybody have any?
Yeah, Mayor Thompson, I, yeah, I just want to say I really like the design. I mean, it it looks a lot better than a palm tree or a cactus, especially since there's not going to be anything else around it. So but the the water tower, that looks great, so I want to just compliment you on that. I think it it'll look a lot better than just having the tower sitting out there or a palm tree, yeah. So so very good, you'd great design, thank you.
And so it does fall within the zoning guidelines, is there anything else that can be done out in that 1350 back to the road minus the easement going back north again?
It vastly exceeds the setback requirements that would be geared to it. But those are primarily gauged towards residential or existing subdivisions, so it's a perfect location for where it is.
Okay. So I guess I didn't understand that. Can they do anything off of the highway or not? I mean, will the highway frontage?
Mayor, if you could, yeah, the the overlaying zoning around the tower is R5, correct? And then there's commercial up close?
Right.
Just just explain, just say, yeah, I mean, it is, right?
Yes, the district that it is within is R5, and there are agricultural uses nearby. And really, the R5 property behaves basically as an ag use as well, even though it's owned R5.
So somebody could develop an R5 property?
That's what I'm getting at, can somebody, there'll be enough room for they can, there can be something along the highway if they ever came to that?
Absolutely, Mayor, because it's 1,300 feet back, so it's quite a ways back. It's where the old thing closer to where the old KCKY tower was, remember that? Back in that big old, they took that down, so this is in that same.
Okay.
It's it's quite a bit back.
All right, well, that's what I wanted to know, thanks, Gilbert. I don't have any more questions, does anybody else? Okay. I need him, um, we need to get to the vote, I need a motion.
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve Resolution Number 25 dash 08 as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, second, Norma?
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murrieta?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, report for Mayor, Council. Councilmember Shope?
I'm okay. Nothing.
Okay. You, no?
Just want to thank the people that did come out and for the Memorial Day presentation out at the Coolidge Cemetery. It was it was pretty well-attended considering, you know, the time of year and how warm it is and everything. The mayor gave a very nice talk and everything. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out there and supports our veterans. And they are moving forward on their veterans memorial out there. The cemetery folks have gone ahead and set aside some ground. They've got a fence up, and they hope to try to get that memorial done by the end of the year. So any, so if you have any questions on that, I'm sure you could talk to the American Legion, the VFT. They would be more than happy to give you any any information on it if you'd like to help out monetarily or otherwise. And other than that, I just want to, just real quick, ask, where are we with the impact fees study and the development service fees study? Are we just point of information?
Yeah, I think we we have the proposal back, is that? Yeah, so we're reviewing it, and then we'll be bringing it forward. Couple months?
Probably in in a month or so after we review it, we'll bring it to you for the impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have nothing.
Gilbert?
Mayor, just real quick, on the, there was some discussion. We have a Kentucky Fried Chicken, as you know, as a Taco Bell, KFC kind of together. And so there's a proposal coming up June 4th at the next next meeting with PMZ, where they're going to bring forward a a conditional use permit and a site plan for a Taco Bell at the corner of Gateway and Tree Drive and the Boulevard. So that's where the hotel site is, but it's on the very corner. And and there's a Taco Bell plan for that, there'll be a site plan and a drive-through. And then what's going to happen is they're going to come back later and and retrofit the KFC and make it just KFC. So they're going to do, so you'll have a separate standalone Taco Bell, and you'll have the KFC standalone. It's going to be all fixed up, so that's exciting. And so both the site plan and the the conditional use permit is for the drive-through, they require to get one. So they'll be before PMZ next Wednesday, I just wanted to. Pretty good, I know we talked about it a little bit, it was out there, so. That, and then real quick, also had the CAC in Arizona at work last Thursday did a job fair, and they had workshop, they had 51 people to help with their job interview skills. And also in the afternoon, they had 29 employers out there, and 275 people went to meet them and apply for positions and see what was available. So it was a very successful job fair at the college, really good. And then just very quickly, we had a an article that came out from a gentleman, he's a journalist named Howard Fisher, Tucson.com on May 17th, 2025, and it talked about the fastest-growing cities in Arizona. Will probably surprise you, but we were in there, mentioned that in Arizona that we have in the areas, the fringes of Phoenix, there are some areas that are growing pretty fast. Queen Creek with 8.1, followed by Pinal County Community of Casa Grande, 7.7, Maricopa, 7.4, Apache Junction, 7.2%, and Coolidge is 7.1. So we're right there, we're growing this fast just by a very close amount to AJ. And Maricopa is is a percentage of of our population, so we're still building and doing good. So just want to share that with you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, and I apologize, Vice Mayor Marietta? Oh, come on, you should have thought of something. And every now and then, I want to, I want to tell everybody what I do do in between the meetings because I don't just sit around all the time. Last one, we did meet with APS for emergency preparedness for summer months. We meet with them yearly for that purpose alone, right before the monsoon season, we met with. Attended the Suncor MPO meeting, attended a meeting in Florence about decision theater, which is a date-driven innovation for regional decision-making led by ASU in Pinal County, which they will, I'm sure, be coming to us one day to join up with them on that. I met with a representative from Lucid to talk to him about different different items that concern all of us here. Met with the president of Union Pacific Railroad last week and discussed the inland port. Met publicly about, oh, no, I went to the public meeting out of Post-Nebula High School about the North-South Freeway. That's phase one, that doesn't really impact us except where it ends up. We don't move that because phase two is hooked to it, and we've got phase two pretty much where we want it. And I turned, I attended the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And so, and I was at the memorial with Councilmember Bagnall, and they did do a very good job, and it was starting to warm up, and so it was just the right length of time. We got out of there before it got too hot. And that's all I have, so I need a motion to get out of here.
So moved.
All favor? Opposed? Thank you for coming, everybody.